In progress.
Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, March 29th. And that would be a correction on there because it says 2021 should be 2022. And first item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chancet? Sulfah?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron? Lehman?
Here.
Ayasi? Malley? Uwer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
And Vogelsinger?
Here.
We have 10 out of 14.
Okay. We have the necessary quorum. And item number two is a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone for the BATV recording. And item number three is items to be removed, added or changed. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay. Matters from the public for items not on the agenda. I believe everybody here is for something on the agenda. Anybody online? Or not on the agenda? Nothing came up?
No.
Okay. And then we will go to item number five, which is a presentation on the progress of the wastewater treatment plant. And welcome.
Hello. I think I need to...
Oh, sorry. I need to stop share so that you can share.
Thank you.
Sure.
We'll get it all figured out just about the time you're done.
Exactly. Okay. Is that working?
Yeah, I just need to start the slideshow. Perfect.
Okay. Hi, my name's Emily. For those of you that don't know me, this is the construction update at the water treatment plants number one and two from the past month. So just a review of the project scope. This is the proposed site plan, so you've got water treatment plant two, and then we're adding in a new building expansion for the new brine area, along with a concrete driveway and relocating that asphalt road. And then there's a picture of what it's going to look like. Well, it does look like now. And then the progress from the past month. So the backwash storage tank relatively unchanged, but the level sensors were installed, so all of that work is officially complete, and that tank has been online since November of 2021. The water treatment plant two expansion, so work is continuing in the new brine building. The tanks and the piping are all installed. The brine pump startup is ongoing. That started this past week. The interior lights are all up and working. The electrical installation is still ongoing. The finished trim installation's ongoing. Well 11 rehab. So well 11 is back in service, and then the transducer still needs to be installed. And then well 10 rehab. So the equipment removal from well number 10 is ongoing and in progress. The equipment inspection is going to be going on within the next two to three weeks. The high service pump rehab, number two and number five, the rehab is continuing with that, and then the estimated reinstallation date and testing is going to be in May of 2022. The dualator rehab. Painters completed the sandblasting and coating of the detention tank. The sandblasting and coating of the filter areas is ongoing, along with the coordination for rehab work specifically through repairs, and then the ongoing analysis of the cost impacts related to the rehab work changes. Continuing on the dualator, the new valves piping and control panel installation is ongoing, so those new valves have been installed, and then the piping and control panel is going to be continuing through this next month. The exterior of the tank has been sandblasted and coated, and that work is completed. The piping work in the filter media is going to be installed in the filter area after the cell rehabilitation is complete. And then the aerator rehab is in progress and ongoing as well. The work for the dualator is expected to be completed in late April of 2022. Next steps moving forward. Ongoing brine building modifications. This would include the chlorine pumps going into next month. Continued rehab for dualator number two. Continued rehab for high service pump two and high service pump five. Continued well number 10 rehab. And then putting that brine system online. The anticipated construction schedule relatively unchanged, with the exception of dualator two just got bumped out a little bit further to late April rather than early April. And again, that backwash storage tank work is completed now. Any questions or comments?
Just a question. I know we've been kind of waiting to find out on the dualator. They were able to fix everything on the tank, so it wasn't bad enough to need replacement. They were able to patch everything and fix it.
Yeah, so that rehab work, last week, the inspection was completed. We had the structural engineer come out because some of those troughs were a little bit worse than we expected, but that inspection is complete, and we're just waiting for the contractor now to kind of finalize pricing so that work can move forward.
Okay. So that was in a... I see that the well inspection on the second well isn't done yet to find out how bad that one is before we know how long it's going to take to finish it.
For well number 10?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just... They're actually out there today finishing up, pulling some of that equipment.
Does anybody else have... Nick?
Brine building expansion. That's a newer building. Was that part of the plan to build it and then expand it? It wasn't... Did we underestimate the original building, or...
There were functions performed in that brine building that we determined there really wasn't enough space for, and it was causing the employees to have to, you know, not do the work in the safest manner. And so by expanding the amount of room in this area, they're able to more safely perform that work.
Is that moving all the salt?
Yeah.
Is it?
It is.
Who designed... I mean, we kind of knew that going in, right? I mean, why...
I don't know if we did or...
I'm not looking to...
Not sure.
I think it's changed design a little bit from what it was originally intended to be in the way we did the brine.
The process changed too?
The process changed a little bit, that we're using different supplies than what we originally did, and it actually... We have more on site, I think, in storage too than what we originally did, the way we were doing it. Because I thought originally wasn't it all liquid?
Yes.
And now it's not.
Gotcha.
One question that I would have, once the work is complete at the water treatment plant, when would be a good month for us to host a city council coming out to see the completed project?
So that I'm not sure about that answer.
Thinking probably June or July, but I'll check.
Yeah, I can check with Steve and have him...
Sounds good.
Get back to you on that one. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you. Okay. Now we will move on to ordinance 2217, proposing establishment of amendment to special service area number 58. And that is a change in this amendment for Tanglewood, which I think is the second or third iteration of that, Scott? Or where we've been?
It's like the... Well, we had several of them that were separate units, and then we did the one that merged all of them together. So there were, I think, five total special service areas when everything's all said and done with this. But it's all under one SSA now.
Right, and that's what I was going to say, is it's all one big umbrella that covers everything, and this is to add... The amendments are to add certain pieces from the original ones that weren't included in the last round when we combined them all.
Correct. So this just amends the final SSA that was approved, just to add these two pieces in, just to ensure contiguity between the two parcels. We believe that it's still considered contiguous, but there was some stuff that ran on with some TIP districts down in the southern part of the metro area, and we just wanted to make sure that, you know, that there's no question about it, that it's contiguous. So adding these two pieces will make sure that the two halves are... I should say, two-thirds and one-third are completely joined together and are contiguous. And just to clarify that this is, you know, we... In the staff report, I said Fabian Parkway. It's actually Main Street, not Fabian Parkway, so I'll make that correction. And because this is less than 5% of the EAV of the original special service area, it only requires notice to the two parcels that are being added to the SSA. So it doesn't affect it. It's a backup SSA in any case. It's a dormant SSA. There's no levy. It just would add these two parcels just to round out the boundary of the SSA.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Any comments? Anybody online have any comments on... Questions on this? Okay. Then I will make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2217, proposing the establishment of amendment to special service area number 58.
Second, Miller.
Motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayasi? Malley? Uwer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chancet? And Sulfah?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And up next is item number seven, which is ordinance 2219, granting a variance for a side setback on a deck at 416 North Batavia Avenue. Sue Wald, applicant.
Alan, just as a reminder, I'm not going to participate because I'm within the 500 feet of the property.
Okay. So Mark is just going to back up and not be part of this. Okay. This is for a deck. It's a side yard setback variance, and according to the memo and going through everything, it was built before without a permit, so that's how this was found out, that it was not in the right spot, and now they've figured out what to do with it.
And the property owner is online.
Okay.
And does have her hand up.
Okay.
Wanting to speak at some point.
Sure. Joel, do you want to start us off and give us the history of this as it goes through and gets through plan commission and gets to here, or the zoning board gets to us?
Sure. Again, this is a variance for an extension of an existing deck, and the extension was built with a three-foot setback instead of the required 12-foot setback. And the ordinance in front of you would grant a variance for the deck extension to have a six-foot setback. As you mentioned, the city became aware of a deck that was built without an extension in follow-up with Ms. Wald and informing her of the required setback. She opted to submit an application for a variance to seek the three-foot setback. She purchased the property in 2018, and she built the deck extension to follow the existing deck's three-foot side setback. Staff considers that existing deck to be non-conforming, and any enlargement of it would have to follow the current code requirement of a 12-foot setback. Ms. Wald explained that the location and the design of the extension adds privacy to her house by obscuring, partially obscuring, obscuring a main level window for the house. Location offered buffers the street noise, and it provides better views and stair access to her rear yard, and keeping the deck away from the house also spared a large desirable tree, and it also allows light into a lower-level window of the house, all while providing that more accessible stair access to the yard. The zoning board acknowledged the issues that were raised by Ms. Wald for the location of the deck extension, and also acknowledged the correspondences of no objection from several neighbors that I did receive, which included a statement of no objection from her neighbor to the south, who would be... who's closest to the deck and potentially most impacted by the deck. The zoning board understood that a three-foot... They understood the reasons for this three-foot setback, but they felt it was too close to the south property line. The board was in general agreement that there are circumstances warranting some code relief, and they did consider during their discussion a six-foot setback as a reasonable compromise. At the hearing, Ms. Wald did accept fault for not first securing the building permit, and she also stated that a deck extension with a six-foot setback from the south property line could be acceptable. After closing the hearing, the zoning board made the findings as are listed in ordinance 22-19. These findings are based on a six-foot deck extension setback. By a vote of five to zero, the board recommended approval of a variance to allow a six-foot side setback for the deck extension, subject to the conditions listed in the ordinance. The committee this evening can recommend approval or denial of the ordinance as presented or consider amendments to the ordinance before taking action. No neighborhood impacts were identified or raised during the public hearing, and again, the neighbor most impacted by the deck extension did not object to the narrower setback, and staff sees no impact to city or staff services. Committee action on the ordinance this evening will allow for final city council action on April 4th, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 22-19 as presented. The city council may act on this ordinance as presented, and city council granting of a variance for a setback different from the zoning board's recommended six feet would require the city council to arrive at alternate findings different from what is in the ordinance, and also that may require a two-thirds vote of the city council for approval if there is a change to the ordinance. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Joel. One question I have, and I didn't see it when I was reading through the packet. Was the original deck built conforming, and then zoning rules were changed, or was it built non-conforming, the original deck?
We could not find a permit for that deck, so we really don't know all the circumstances, but the deck has been there a while, and the property ownership has changed hands since that deck has been there, and we would consider that deck to be non-conforming. I have not come across a version of zoning regulations from the past that would have allowed a three-foot setback there. So it was either built non-conforming or illegal, but we are considering the existing... The original deck is non-conforming.
Okay. I just wondered if we knew that or not. I guess it doesn't matter at this point because it is what it is, so... All right. Does anybody have any comments, questions? Start out on this.
I do. I just want some clarification. What they're asking for is this, what the zoning board approved is this, right? There's a difference. So what are we voting on?
Whether we agree with the zoning board and the compromise of half of the normal setback.
But the design, it's still different than what they're...
What was already built.
Or are we...
What was already built is there.
That's non-conforming, but this is...
No. What was built is not the non-conforming deck that was there originally. This is an addition that's already built.
Gotcha.
And it's at three feet right now. The zoning requirement would be 12 feet, and kind of the compromise that was come up with it, the zoning board was six feet. So right in the middle of it. So they'll have to take the deck apart.
Right. But the neighbors don't have a problem with it as is? Is that what I'm understanding?
I think...
I'm not sure. We've got two people who would wish to speak, and one is the property owner and a neighbor.
And I think the way it was written, or the way I read the letter that was in there from the immediate next-door neighbor to the south was, they're okay with the six-foot. They would prefer it at six feet over the three feet because they think it's too close to the lot line. Leah?
At the end of the memo, I think there's four different letters from neighbors that are... all say that they are okay with the deck as it is, if I'm understanding, with the extension. Including, I think, the neighbor at 416 North Batavia Avenue, who is the one who expressed his concerns, but then at the end he said, "I support the request for variance."
And the variance request would be at six feet?
Is it the six feet? Okay. It's not the variance that the property owner is requesting?
Okay, the variance that was approved by the zoning board and given a positive recommendation sent to us.
Okay.
Is at six feet.
Okay.
And what Joel just explained is if we don't agree with that, and say we say, "Just leave it alone and leave it at three feet," it will probably take a two-thirds vote from the council to pass it.
Okay. Well, then the other three letters, I think, say that they are fine with the deck extension as it is.
Tom?
So, the neighbor directly to the south that Leah's speaking of, that was on March 2nd, which I believe was prior to the hearing, and he states that he supports a request for variance. So I read it the same way as Leah.
Okay.
He was supporting the three-foot variance that the applicant put forward. So I think that's important to consider, that all four neighbors seem to be in support of it.
Okay. Anybody else on this side? Anybody online?
Yes.
From an aldermanic standpoint that wants to comment on this before we have the property owner and other comments? Okay. Does the property owner want to comment on this?
I want to test the chance.
I saw that Sarah can't hear. I don't... I don't know why. Can other people... Jenny, can you hear us?
I think it was just Tom was not speaking into the microphone enough, I think was what it was. That's...
Exactly.
Get you a headset. Rookie.
My microphone's broke.
You want to take the next one?
Take the one next to you and see if it gets better. I want to make sure everybody can hear. Test. That's better.
Okay. This is the property owner.
Okay.
Ms. Wald, you should be able to speak.
Okay. Thank you. I just raised my hand, just to kind of let you know that I was here, and I have had conversations with my neighbor to the south. That's Mr. Curtis, who wrote one of the letters, and I do believe he's in attendance as well.
Yes.
And to kind of answer the question I think somebody was asking, by changing it to a six-foot, would I have to, you know, tear it down and rebuild it? Yes, I would. And that just answers that question. But I did have conversations with James Curtis, who is here, and I think he has some opinions that he wants to share. So if you want to move on to him, that's fine with me.
Okay. James?
James, go ahead.
Hi there, everybody.
Hello.
Go ahead, James.
Hi, everybody. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. It sounds like there was some confusion around the letter supporting the variance. That was supporting the variance as requested by Sue at three feet. Not at six feet, as was ruled by the zoning committee. So that was prior to the zoning committee's approval or ruling. Being what it is, I would just prefer that, you know, they're allowed to keep it as is. It's built. It's, you know, it's neither here nor there at this point, and the six-foot compromise is going to require them to tear it down, rebuild it. It's going to have some kind of hardship on them that I would prefer. They just don't have to be subjected to over this summer or next.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Sue, did you want to continue on your comments?
Well, I would like to offer, does anyone have any direct questions for me?
Does anybody on the council have any questions? Go ahead.
Well, just the obvious question. This was obviously built without going to permit.
Correct.
Because this would have been addressed...
Right.
Upfront. Why was that done?
Oh, why didn't I do a permit? The big question. Well, this is... You know, I didn't think I needed one because it was an extension, but it's... I really should have known better. I've been rehabbing the house, and I obtained several permits on different things that I did in the house, a driveway and a fence and stuff, and I actually obtained a permit that turned out I didn't need after all, and all I can say is I don't think I've heard a good permit. Did I hear somebody? They can't hear me? Am I okay?
You're okay.
Oh, okay. I heard something. So, yeah, and I realized that this is on me. I had... Had I known... I mean, I honestly thought that the setback was three foot because of my existing deck and the house in Downers Grove we had in DuPage County, they all have three foot, and so it didn't seem odd to me, and I would have never intentionally, you know, violated a setback. And once I realized, oh, no, I should have got this, you know, permit and that it was a 12-foot setback, I was quite horrified because really to try and build the deck in the way I need it to be built to minimize the stairs and to have it lowered and create extra light in the windows and create privacy screen between my house and the neighbor's house, it kind of needs to be pulled away from the house, and in order to stay in the 12-foot setback, it would have to be attached to the house. And now you've got this big glorious 200-year-old tree. It's a beautiful oak tree that's really in the way. And so we met with the zoning board, and geez, it was a solid hour, maybe a little more than an hour, going over every little detail, including the way the house is built. You know, my... The portion of my house where my living room and dining room is, is on that side of the house that kind of faces my neighbor. Well, it's on an angle. It's built on an angle to... Because it was nestled amongst these beautiful trees, and, you know, back in the 50s when it was built, you know, the properties looked a lot different. There were long views of natural stuff, but since then houses have been built and garages, and now when I look out, you know, I look at my neighbor all the time. So there's a privacy factor that, you know, I was trying to accomplish with this all as well. So, but anyway, therefore, I decided to apply for the permit, I mean, not just because it was already built, but, I mean, the variance. I decided to apply for the variance not just because it was already built, but because I honestly felt that was really the only way to build it. And at the meeting, you know, they didn't like that it was... One person in particular didn't like that it was three foot, but, you know, I think they were coming at it as if it wasn't built. Could I build it in a six-foot? And the answer is yes. I could. And that's what they're approving, and that's what's, you know, up for vote right now, I assume. And, I mean, it would require me to tear it down, but I understand that's on me. So with talking with my neighbor, James, he didn't really think that was worth it, you know, the three-foot difference, and I don't know that he's that interested in enduring any more construction right there. So that's my explanation. It's really no good of an explanation as to why I didn't do it. I did have a pretty stressful year with my husband nearly dying on me, and trying to find people to work during COVID was impossible, so when the opportunity arose, I just jumped on it and built the dang thing. So that's my bad, and here I am trying to fix it.
But in the end, this is in front of us because she came forward looking for a variance. We didn't catch her out of variance. If that's not the case.
Maybe Scott could speak to that as to how this ended up coming to community development?
No, we actually had an anonymous complaint regarding the deck construction.
No, we actually had an anonymous complaint regarding the deck construction after the deck was basically done. So, that's how we found out about it.
So, this isn't someone coming forward voluntarily?
No.
I guess, and my feeling on it is, one, I know the permit issue and not doing that to start with. I think the deck could be built around the tree. I've seen several of those, and I think there's actually one a block south of it that's built around. It's got like a little treehouse deck, you know, raised patio that's out on the back behind the house, and I think it's actually built around a tree or was built alongside of a tree. So, I think that that could be done. But, you know, as long as the neighbors aren't a problem with it, and it's in, it's to me not obtrusive to the point where, you know, it puts somebody four feet away from somebody's house that was there on the other side looking in a window at that same level, I'd say to leave it alone.
I would agree, but obviously, a complaint did come forward, and it might just be like, okay, now it's over, forget it. I am concerned about the ask for forgiveness versus permission concept that we don't want to set precedent. In this case, I would be for supporting this, just to move forward, but I think we need to be cautious and I'm not real happy about it. But I certainly, it's not in anyone's best interest to take it down to save three feet if the neighbors aren't minding it, is my thought.
I guess the one question, too, I'd have for Scott would be, if this ever needs repair, if we do the variance, they can repair it where it is? Because I know a lot of the non-conforming things that are out there, you can't go back and rebuild, correct?
Right, yeah. If you grant the variance, they would be able to repair it because that's the deviation from the code that you would have granted. They can't expand it. They would have to book the exact same footprint, but they can expand it beyond that.
They could rebuild it where it's at, if we give a variance on it. Leah?
I have a question, but Sarah had her hand up first.
Okay. Sarah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, this sounds like the kind of setting where a variance is warranted, hearing from the residents. That would be a hardship on everybody else to deal with more construction, and then a hardship on the homeowner. Yes, I feel, as Nick Seron, as Alderman Seron pointed out, you know, the opposite order, permit first would have been ideal. That's not what happened. Hopefully, this is just a case for learning for everybody, but I feel in support of this as well. That's it. Thank you.
Leah? Go ahead.
So, if in the future, another neighbor moves in and they have an issue with the deck, what happens at that point?
To do anything about it?
Because we would have approved this variance.
Right.
I mean, the granted, the variance is a permanent thing. So, you know, that's the, part of the crux of the issue is that when you grant a variance, these neighbors like it, they're fine with it, they don't have an issue with it, but somebody else moving in later on may not like it as much. It may have an effect on, you know, one of the neighbors with their view or how it appears in relation to the property. So, you have to kind of look at it, and, you know, the neighbors are important, but you also have to look at it just from a code standpoint, you know, is this something that you would have granted otherwise?
Are we putting ourselves in a trick bag, Scott, where the original deck that was on the house is non-conforming and is not part of this variance, correct?
Right.
So, if the original deck has to be rebuilt, we wouldn't permit it without a variance to rebuild the original section of deck?
Correct. They would have to come back and get a variance for rebuilding that, yes.
Okay. I guess that was a question that we need to make sure gets out there because that's also something that could happen, you know, in five or 10 years. The council can be completely different, the neighbors can be completely different, and they won't be able to rebuild the main part of the deck without a variance.
Now, let me clarify that, though. If they do repairs, less than 50% of the deck, that's okay. We've allowed, we allow that for not anything that's not conforming. So, as long as it's not more than 50% of the boards or the railings, whatever, that's okay.
Okay.
Still need to get a permit for it.
Search.
Okay, does anybody? Abby?
I have a general question, too, about.
Pull the mic down.
Just a general question about these kind of processes, like, obviously, the fear of having to maybe tear it down and redo it if you don't get a permit ahead of time should be deterrent. Are there any examples, or have we ever instituted any other sort of consequence? Or maybe we'll grant it, but there's a fee? Do other cities do anything like that?
Well, I think the permit is double, right, Scott?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Permit would be double for this one.
Any work started without a permit is a double fee, which I think in this case would be, I think it's 85 or 55, I don't remember exactly, but that would be the thing that we would do. In some cases, we write tickets, citations, if we, you know, did a stop work order or something like that, sometimes we do that. The work was already done here in this case, so we did not write citations.
I would say, if it weren't for the fact that her neighbor was in support, should be taking this down. So, that should be deterrent. If somebody wants to, oh, my neighbor doesn't want it, so I'm not going to get a permit, I'm just going to build it, well, now you're in trouble. I mean, you're going to be taking it down and doing that extra expense. The fact that her neighbor is in support is getting her through this.
Wouldn't necessarily use that as a justification across the board in the future for people not getting permits.
For sure.
Or for granting variances. I mean, the neighbors can like something, but that doesn't necessarily mean you should grant the variance because of that reason. You should have the, and the zoning board has to do findings of fact as to, you know, the hardship and all the other requirements that they're required to make as part of their charge. So, that's the basis of granting a variance or not granting a variance.
On the flip side, I do appreciate she's investing a lot in making this property more valuable and better for all of Batavia.
So, would we have to go through the same findings of fact that the zoning board went through to enable us to do the three-foot one? Or can we basically agree with their findings and yet change it to three feet instead of six feet? What is our?
Joel, do you want to mention? Get in there.
Yes. The zoning board, not the zoning board, the committee, if the committee feels that these findings can be met based on a three-foot setback for the deck extension, then please, I will request that you do take formal action on that. It can be as simple as, the motion for the action on the variance to include a statement to that effect. The ordinance will then be amended to include a committee of the whole findings, essentially the same findings based on a three-foot deck setback.
But then we need a major?
The two thirds.
A two-thirds majority. And as far as I see right here, I don't see anybody waving their hands at me or saying that they're not going to, and.
I believe a two-thirds majority will require 10 positive votes.
So, is anybody?
At the council level.
Right.
At the council level.
Is anybody here at the committee level going to say no to it?
You only have nine.
We only have nine.
We have 10 here, but nine will be voting.
Okay.
So, anybody could build a deck after this, up to three feet?
No.
No.
A variance is different than a text amendment, so this is just specific to this individual.
So, we're proposing six feet?
No. Well, the zoning board, the recommendation that came out of the zoning board of appeals was six feet as a compromise between three feet, which is our, what the ordinance states.
12 feet is.
I'm sorry, 12 feet is what it is. Three feet is what it's actually built at. And the compromise from the zoning board was six feet.
Right.
And our choice is whether we go with what zoning board said, or we go with what's as built and allow it to stay the way it is at three feet. I mean, it's still a gamble because anybody could change their mind between now and the council meeting when this comes up. But I don't feel like I've heard anything negative that would say that it wouldn't pass. And not that we can guarantee what somebody that's not here is going to vote, but I don't see that this is a one of those situations.
Let's be clear with her in that if this gets recommended to the city council with a positive vote, that doesn't mean it's passing. We got to get through that next Monday.
Right. And when it comes up to council, there's still the chance that it might not meet that.
Because there's three people not here that could be against it.
And one that's not going to vote. So, Sue, did you hear that?
Yes, I do.
So, that's always a possibility, but I think the leaning right now from the council or committee of the whole that's here is that we would allow granting the variance according to what you had originally asked for.
I understand.
Or it is as it is built today.
So, the motion would need to include that the same findings that approved by the zoning board support the variance requested by the property owner of three feet.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments or make a motion? Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2219, granting a variance for side setback for a deck at 416 North Batavia Avenue for Sue Wolf, applicant, with the change from the zoning board recommendations of a six-foot setback to a three-foot setback.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Lehman. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron, absent. Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi, absent. Malay, absent. You were absent. Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanset, absent. And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried, nine to zero.
Okay. So, Sue, that will end up on our, is it going to go to our next council meeting?
Yes.
Next Monday night? Okay. And that will be on the regular agenda. Not on consent. Since we have one already that will not be voting on it. Let the record reflect that all the renewer has rejoined the meeting.
Might have to not voting on that because Chanset would not be there.
Oh, yeah, Dan. Okay. Up next, then, would be ordinance 2218, amending the zoning city code Title 10, Chapter 2.1, regarding garage setbacks, City of Batavia applicant, and Chapter 4.4, regarding electronic changeable message signs, Aurora Sign Company applicant. And then that would be Joel.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. As you know, attached garages on single-family residences must be setback from the remainder of the front of the house. This requirement for the attached garage setback began with adoption of 2010 zoning code, and that happened after some then recently approved annexation and subdivisions included a garage setback requirement. At the time of the adoption of the code, staff and the council at that time felt, since it had been recently approved with annexations, that we codify that and put it in the zoning code. However, since 2010, very few homes have actually been built with this garage setback. Most of the new homes that have been built since that time were built in subdivisions that were approved with annexations at a time when the zoning code did not require the setback, and those annexation subdivisions were approved with the zoning requirements being frozen at that time. So, the houses built since 2010 in those subdivisions did not require the setback. The recently approved iterations of Winding Creek included zoning code relief to eliminate the garage setback requirement for whatever was proposed in Winding Creek at that time and what is poised to be given final approval at the next city council meeting. Staff has learned that architects, homeowners, and developers all have complained about the difficulty of this requirement in fitting home buyers' desires. And again, with the most recent Winding Creek relief that was granted, it's apparent that the garage setback is no longer generally supported in Batavia. And with that, staff is proposing to eliminate the garage setback requirements. At the Plan Commission public hearing, two citizens were in attendance and spoke in support of this change, and the Plan Commission recommended approval of this change by a four to one vote. The other part of this ordinance is pursuant to an application that Aurora Sign Company submitted on behalf of a Batavia industrial business client. And this client, or Aurora Sign Company, has submitted an application to amend the zoning code, to expand or to allow the same electronic changeable message signs, or ECMs, that are allowed generally for commercial properties, to also be allowed on industrial properties. Staff understands the importance for businesses to provide targeted messages effectively and efficiently, and this is what ECMs can do best. ECM use is increasing, and again, staff understands the benefits of strengthening the existing regulations for ECMs citywide. So, in addition to the change that Aurora Sign Company has applied for, staff is proposing some additional amendments to require all ECMs in the city or to require the ECM portion of signs to be lower than the overall sign height. Currently, we allow changeable message signs to occupy only up to half of the allowed sign face or whatever sign face is being proposed. And again, this is only on commercial properties, but we only allow up to half of the overall sign. What we are doing with this amendment is trying to get that changeable message portion lower than the overall allowed sign height. Staff is also proposing to add a limit to the maximum day and night light intensity for the electronic messages. Also, we are proposing a minimum sign or a maximum, a minimum sign change interval so the sign isn't changing too frequently. We are also looking to establish an overnight turnoff time and to require appropriate maintenance for the ECMs. Staff is generally accepting of the Plan Commission's recommendation to expand ECMs to industrial properties as requested, but staff suggests in the light and general industrial districts that electronic message signs are limited to only 40% of the overall signs. And this is due to the fact that industrial properties do not have the same general business model of selling products to the general public like a lot of retail stores do. Staff also believes the minimum message chain interval should be no more frequent than 30 seconds. This is opposed to the Plan Commission recommended 15 seconds. Staff notes that the ECMs that were approved for Culvers and Speedway are limited to, or maybe that's, I can't remember, that was Speedway, but they're limited to a, yeah, one-minute change interval. Staff feels 30 seconds is a reasonable compromise to allow a faster message change from the one minute that we've approved before and to the 15 seconds that the Plan Commission recommended. It will allow more change while not overly diverting driver attention. And again, it will allow for more signs to come up overall. will allow for more signs to come up overall. By a vote of five to zero, the Plan Commission recommended to allow ECMs in both the LI and general industrial districts and to add the specifications proposed by staff generally to ECMs except to allow the applicant requested 50% of ECM sign coverage and, as mentioned before, to establish a 15-second message change interval. The draft ordinance in front of you includes the Plan Commission recommended change and not the staff recommended changes. Staff anticipates no negative impacts to properties or city services with both the removal of the attached garage setbacks or for allowing electronic message signs on industrial zone properties. The latter is subject to appropriate size and operation specifications for the electronic message signs. Cow action on the variance on the ordinance tonight will allow for final city council action on April 4th. And again, staff has prepared the ordinance in accordance with the Plan Commission's recommendation. However, staff recommends the cow approve the variance with a 40% limit for light industrial and general industrial electronic message sign coverage and the 30-second change interval. If the cow does agree with staff, ordinance 22-18 would be amended accordingly for city council action.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Joel. I guess we'll start this one off. Does anybody in the room have any comments? From council? Anybody online? Council members? Nick, go ahead.
Just a quick clarification. There are some scenarios where 15 seconds is okay and some where 30 seconds is okay. Joel?
Can you repeat that? I was having trouble hearing.
What is the different zoning requirements that allow for 15-second increments versus 30-second increments?
We don't have any specified time currently with commercial properties where they're allowed. The time interval by code is set by the Plan Commission when it reviews the sign for approval. And where that has been done recently, they've approved Culvers and Speedway had a one-minute time interval.
But you're allowing, in your changes in industrial, you want to keep it at 30 seconds or allow it to go to 30? But in...
Well, currently, currently there is no allowance for any electronic changeable message sign on industrial properties. This application would now expand electronic message signs to be located on industrial properties. That is what the applicant has requested. What staff is proposing to do at this time is to address some other things in general regarding electronic message signs. So what staff is proposing that wherever we allow electronic changeable message signs, that the change interval be no more frequent than 30 seconds.
Just for clarification, sorry, Joel, just for clarification, we don't have standards for electronic message centers for some of these requirements, that we've done them on a case-by-case basis with the Plan Commission. So what we're trying to do here is actually establish some codified standards for these so that we can apply them as opposed to looking at them on each circumstance.
I guess my question would be, and we go through a lot of stuff with IDOT and saying, hey, just to alleviate any responsibility, we're going to go with their rules. Are there any rules on this? I mean, where does 30 seconds versus 15 seconds? Who's to determine what draws people's attention and is safer and more unsafe? It seems like it's a random number. Isn't there some standardization out there that we should follow instead of making it up ourselves?
I wish there was, but there really isn't. You know, there's different standards. I think the tollway may have some standards regarding changeable signs, but they have a lot of billboards along the tollway. So there may be some standards for that, but you know, a lot of times these aren't a case-by-case basis. I think the basis for the 30 seconds is to essentially allow for one message to be seen by a driver as they pass by the signs, that you're not looking at two, three, four messages as you're driving by because that creates a distraction. So the idea behind 30 seconds is essentially to allow one message to be presented to the drivers as they pass by. And that's less than what our current, the signs that we've granted before, the fire station, the Lincoln Inn, some of these other ones that we've had, those are at one minute. And so we're proposing to make that, you know, shorter at 30 seconds.
And would this new ordinance then apply to the signs that are already out there? Or are they still stuck at a minute?
No, they would be allowed to follow the new standard.
Allowed to go to this?
Correct.
Mark?
So I brought up a few weeks ago that I'm pretty sure pretty much every one that we have in town was before my time, was approved before my time. I don't like them at all. However, I actually look at the industrial area and I'm like, okay, that's a little different in the industrial. I'd almost be okay with having them there. I'm not okay with them being in the commercial district, so I'd really like to really separate this, in my opinion, because I don't want to change what we have that I don't like and make it worse because I think bigger signs and faster moving signs. And I did think that, I thought, maybe it's just the tollway, but I thought IDOT was a minute change because this came up 15 years ago when I was on Plan Commission in North Aurora, that there was a minimum time that was set somewhere by the state. So maybe things have changed, but the garages I'm fine with. I'd like to separate that out and say, okay, garages, let's go ahead and approve that. But the signs, I just don't like them. And I think that if we continue to allow them in the commercial area, it just, you know, who's next? And we just line it up all the way down Randall Road and have all these electronic signs because people are going to say, oh, that's right, we can have these and new businesses. And I mean, next thing you know, we've got 100-foot signs trying to attract people from neighboring areas like you're going down the expressway and you see these huge signs. I know we're not going to do that, but... So I'd like, I wouldn't mind seeing them, like I said, in the industrial area. I just don't want to see them, so...
So what we would do in that case?
I think we need to separate this whole thing out. I think we need to, like, eliminate what we have and start over with a new one just in the industrial area.
In the, we probably couldn't consider eliminating the electronic signs in the commercial area tonight because it's not something that's on the agenda.
No, I understand, but that's why I wouldn't vote in favor of this because it's just amending what we have, and I don't want to amend what we have.
Yeah, I think we probably need to take a look at the ordinance as to how it's structured because if we're going to eliminate them in the commercial districts, we probably need, I think we've published for that as part of this amendment, but we would probably have to go back and pretty significantly restructure the ordinance itself if we're going to, if that's the direction of the commission, of the council. So we can, you know, we can separate out the garages in a separate ordinance, and if we want to chew on the electronic signs more as to how we want to do that, we could certainly do that, too.
Can I make a point? What is being proposed to change for commercial properties is to put a limit on the light intensity, number one. So if anybody who is opposed to the brightness of the signs, what will happen, what would happen with approval of this ordinance is to put a cap on both the daytime illumination level and the nighttime illumination level. Also, it will require or set standards to require maintenance of the signs so you don't see a partially worded message or, you know, a broken up image. It will require the signs to remain fully operational, and there really is no code minimum or maximum for message change. This will at least establish something.
That was the one.
And the Plan, and the Plan Commission can consider and approve something greater than 30 seconds. They just can't, if the ordinance is approved per staff, they can't approve something faster than 30 seconds. They can require a longer change duration.
I guess that was the one thing that I thought, to me, I didn't realize we didn't have standards on both the daytime and nighttime brightness on them, and that we had no maintenance, you know, out there, that nothing, we could tell somebody, hey, half your sign doesn't work, turn it off until you fix it. I see we have, are you the applicant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
We have the applicant up here about the signs, but I think we'll let her speak now and we'll get some information from her. Go ahead.
If I may.
Sure.
Good evening. My name's Michelle. I'm with Aurora Sign Company. We were presenting this application on behalf of a particular client that is in a light commercial, or excuse me, light industrial area who was seeking a sign for similar usage while they are not advertising to the general public, they are advertising business to business. This particular client happens to be a trucking company, and they are in an industrial area where their customers are the other industrial businesses that would need transportation or storage or towing, and that's the service that they provide. So it would be erroneous to say that just because they're not advertising to the general public that they should have a smaller sign. So that's why they had asked for the equivalency of the 50% just as the commercial locations have. Additionally, we did bring up, and it wasn't originally part of the text amendment, but I did add it at the zoning meeting, the request to change the duration of the hold time for the messages. And I had taken a liberty of a survey of the surrounding communities to check their current codes and what they have allowed. St. Charles, for example, theirs is 15-second hold time. Elgin is 10 seconds. South Elgin is 10 seconds. Warrenville is 10 seconds. Wheaton is four seconds, which is pretty quick, admittedly, so. And the city of Chicago, inclusive of the billboards that are on 294 and 290, is 10 seconds. So we did understand that 10 second might be a little too short, and we did find that the 15 seconds seemed to be an amenable answer. The one-minute hold time, our company was also privy to working on a variance for a business that is on Randall Road who did have an EMC in a commercial district that did have the one-minute hold time. Unfortunately, I was not the speaker at that particular meeting. The client had an attorney present, and the attorney did not speak to that one-minute hold time. But because we are aware and we do this type of work in other communities, we felt that the one-minute hold time was a bit extreme, and that's why I brought it forward at this particular zoning meeting as well.
Okay. Leah?
So if I'm understanding, if this ordinance, if this ordinance passes, then any light industrial or industrial area can install one of these signs, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm thinking of specifically, like, in our neighborhoods on Wilson, like at Wilson and Van Nordwick, where we have those light industrial areas there, and I just, I'm having a hard time imagining electronic signs throughout our neighborhoods in these light industrial areas, and I just don't think that's going to be very attractive for our communities.
If I may, it's often come up in other communities. If an area abuts a residential area, there are some other subrequirements that might provide relief for something like that. If they're within 150 feet of a residential zone, then they're not permitted in that block, or things like that could possibly be reviewed and added into the ordinance for the industrial. But the other thing to note is that these are not strictly just the changeable message sign. It is a typical monument sign where 50% of it, as we're trying to promote here, 50% of it would be the branded typical portion of an illuminated cabinet. The other 50% of it would be the changeable message portion. So it won't be just a giant square that's going to flash and change messages, too.
And I thought, when you mentioned that, I think it's in here, I want to say it's within 200 feet of the residential, there's something mentioned. And there's also another one that, that you have to have a minimum of 100 feet of street frontage. So I don't know if you have a lot that's 55 feet wide, say, or whatever they are along Wilson Street, that that would even be a possibility to have a changeable message
Right.
Board along Wilson Street. You know, or say the light industrial that's along Main Street, that you'd be able to do that on, whereas a building wide is the property, you wouldn't be able to do that on, you know, for a monument sign.
Yeah, I'm seeing that now. Thank you for pointing that out.
And am I reading that correctly, Scott or Joel? Is that how that it has to have a minimum of 100 feet of frontage to be able to have the sign?
Yes, any, that's not just electronic signs, any type of freestanding sign, you have to have a minimum of 100 feet of frontage.
Okay. Because I think that's where I look at that, and I think there's maybe one business that has a monument sign along that frontage, and then everything else, they're on the buildings. I have a question.
And then there's also the illumination, it has to be turned off at 11 o'clock and then in the ordinance, if it's within 200 feet of a residential area.
And the lighting is 10% of what it is during the day is what it would be at night?
Yes, I mean, the nits, it's a measurement of brightness, and so I guess you could say it's 10%, sure.
Right, the signs...
I don't know the brightness.
Okay.
Sorry, the signs are equipped with a feature to, a photocell that will check the ambient light and adjust for that. The signs can also be programmed if a particular site warrants this, or if this is to be written into code at the close of business, the sign can be shut, the EMC portion at least can be shut off, or at 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, or whatever is decided.
Mike? I have a question. Why would we limit the commercial or light industrial to 40% while everybody else has 50%?
I thought that was a question I have. I would leave it at 50% for everybody.
Why wouldn't we just keep it the same for everybody? Right. I would like to see that changed.
It was just a suggestion that staff had based on their perception of the different purpose of messaging, but the applicant has just raised the reason why, since they are actually marketing business to business, why they're requesting it to be the same as commercial.
And I think of it as if I was in industrial over there and I needed second shift help and I needed to hire 12 employees, the first place I'd want to be is on the street with everybody else driving by, and if I have my per hourly rate out there on the message board and it happens to be $2 a hire and somebody's working across the street, working second shift, they're going to go for the one for more money, and that's where I think these things make sense.
Correct.
Not that I want to sell signs or...
We're hiring.
I would just like it to see a uniform. We're going to do, have 50% for everyone.
And what do we think about the timeframe as far as the change?
I have an opinion on that, and it's that I don't know anything. So we're making assumptions, and I say that jokingly, but without a guidance of some other organization running studies, who's to say that the longer is safer? Because the longer, you might get attached to it longer, and you don't want to be attached longer. It might be the shorter is safer. We don't know, so why are we...
And what kind of message are you trying to get across?
Trying to anecdotal determination on that. I would stick with what other communities are doing. From a liability standpoint, it's probably safer, and we don't know anything different. So I would stick with the 10 seconds or...
In my mind, some of it has to be speed-related. You know, if you're out and you're doing 65 miles an hour down the highway, how long it stays up on the sign has got to be different than it is if you're doing 30 in town.
I don't think I want to grab somebody's attention for too long. You should be watching the road. I mean, I don't know, I could argue, I could argue the other side to keep it shorter. I don't know.
There's enough to strike.
Yeah, and I think, if I may, I think, you know, if we really want to get into the weeds of that, there are studies that talk about, you know, speed versus time change and everything else. We didn't get into that. You know, I know that the sign company can certainly say things that would be beneficial to them and shorter timeframes and things like that, but I think that there's been some studies that show that the longer timeframes are actually safer because you're not having the drivers read additional messages and see the changes that are happening as they're going by. So if you have less of a time change, that's really actually safer because they're not sitting there reading... not sitting there reading multiple messages.
Is there, is there a law on, on the amount of content on a sign? That would draw your attention?
No, that's locally decided.
I mean, I, I don't know. I don't, I could argue that.
There's, there's a comfortable balance, and, and I agree, it is based on the speed limit if the sign, where it sits in relation to a traffic signal versus a stop sign, and how frequently the, the cars are passing it. Ideally, we don't want the hold times to be so long that it appears it could just as well be a static sign, and then they're losing the benefit of having the ability to change the message. So that, that's why the one-minute seemed exceptionally long, particularly on Randall Road, because even if you're caught at a light, you may only see the one message the whole time you've said at the light. So that was the reason why we were bringing that up.
Abby?
With just some quick measurements as a follow-up to Alderman Lee and Leah Lehman's comment, there are multiple properties on both Wilson and First Street in West Town that would qualify with the 100-foot frontage. So we would, we could see that in some of these neighborhood light industrial pockets. Just wanted to add that.
I guess my thought, like, on First Street, that there's not that much traffic, that they would, to me, would justify putting up a sign like that, or spending the money on that. Now, Wilson Street, that's a different, that's a different thing. Which ones on Wilson Street are 100 feet?
Well, they're just numbers on the zoning map, so I'm trying to think.
But they are, but they are 100-foot wide lots?
Yeah, so I mean, just the one on the corner is the easiest one. The windmills cabinets is 130 feet across, and that's about what the next couple of properties are going west down the street.
They don't have any room on that property to put a sign up.
Yeah, that's true.
With the trucks and trailers and everything, there's no way.
And pieces of granite.
Yeah, there's no way they could put a sign up there.
And you're right, First Street's probably not gonna be an issue. I was picturing West Town, I was picturing Main Street when I measured it, but that's-
And I mean, there's always that possibility, and I think that that's something that, you know, we have to think about. Again, I think Mark's probably right, that there's probably some discussion we should have beyond this ordinance, whether or not, and how far, what kind of proliferation we wanna let happen. I mean, they're gonna be there, and just how many of them are we gonna end up with? I think it's really hard to say no to them when you've got them in front of our two fire stations. That doesn't set a real-
Well, there's a difference when it's amongst a lit parking lot, like in Culvers, it's not overwhelming. In the middle of Wilson Street, going down a big, I mean, I live by the Marmion sign, I don't know if you've ever seen that at night. I mean, I don't know what Aurora's limits are, but I don't think they have any, as far as the illumination and the brightness. I mean, it's like Little Vegas when you drive by. But luckily, there's no residential really close or anything. I mean, that, that's where you get into the weeds.
And I think that, to me, was one of the benefits I saw with this having the, the light regulations in it, by being able to reduce that and making somebody follow that, rather than just say, hey, it's on all day, it's always bright, it's even brighter during the day, but not having any regulations for that is not a good thing to do.
The only other thing I could suggest is if you get into some, you know, I don't know how much you wanna get into regulating, but you could also consider making it a conditional use in certain areas as well, where you'd have to review each one.
Where are they currently allowed? Sorry, I'm-
It's commercial.
Just in commercial.
Yes.
Not downtown mixed use.
Right.
And, and would this be allowable in downtown mixed use?
Well, it's-
Scott, or not?
DMU's listed in the-
DMU does not allow electronic message centers. It doesn't allow any type of, you know, any, any type of electronic signs.
So electronic changeable message signs on page 12 of your memo, it's talking about freestanding signs, monument signs, and says a minimum of 50 feet frontage for freestanding monument signs. Is it just, is that just the section above it? I should disregard that, that gets into electric stuff at line F?
Joel, do you have that?
Nope, you're still on?
It must be.
Sorry, I-
It's just for monuments. I've, I've read it, you know.
I'm sorry, I, I, did I have one? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
That's okay. Item A, I see, there was a change to the height listed in this memo for a freestanding monument sign, so it's, there's mention of the downtown mixed-use district, but I see this is for monuments signs, not for the electric changing message signs.
Okay. I guess my preference on this would be to leave them at 50% of the sign, so that that's uniform from whatever district they're in. If we were to try to make it a conditional use, Scott, how would we set that up?
Yeah, we're probably gonna have to go back and do another amendment, because I don't think we published for this, this, that would be of, of the use that we'd have to create essentially, so that we wouldn't be able to address that tonight.
Would you be able to create a prohibition of the signs within a certain number of feet of a residential property?
You could do that, yes. Now we can do it tonight.
It sounds like that's a concern here tonight.
Because we had 200 feet was listed, and I think that's when they, within 200 feet they have to be shut off at the time, the overnight timeframe that was listed in there.
So just prohibit them altogether?
Right. You could do that.
I do note if we, if we do take that, if, if, if the council does take that action, that would make the, at least the east side fire station sign non-conforming?
There's always something.
Which is okay. I mean, if you wanna leave it non-conforming, I think the Emmanuel Lutheran Church also would probably be non-conforming.
That would be true. Is it Emmanuel Lutheran Church that has the one on?
Yes, on Hart Road.
Okay. I think where all of them are.
Hart.
West Side's fine.
Then would probably, is probably within 100, close proximity to residential property. I'm not sure exactly where the one or two properties that are in Batavia on the east side of South Batavia Avenue are located, but it is proximate and facing residential.
Those would be considered non-conforming if we pass it.
Correct.
Correct.
But they wouldn't be prohibited.
You could keep, they could keep them, but if they replaced, want to replace them, it'd be similar to the deck we just talked about, that they wouldn't be able to replace them, repair them, but not replace. One other option you could do is you could have a setback from industrial, you could have just a setback from industrial electronic signs adjacent to residential areas, and they were, and/or commercial, and, because the, the fire stations, as well as the churches, are PFI, so they're institutional districts, so they're a little different.
We've got some work to do on the- Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm almost thinking we should just, like Mark said, pull the, the garage part out of it, get this crafted the way we want it and pass it. Now, would that, because this went to, was it a public hearing at the plan, or at the plan commission? So would it have to go back through that if we rewrite it?
I think it depends on the substance of what it is. If it's, if it's changes that were published for, then we're good, but if it's something that we would have to amend a different section of the code, we would have to go back and do another public hearing again.
That's probably the better way to do it than to pass it, or try to pass it and then have to amend it immediately. I think would, I'd rather see us do that. So the things, I guess, from what I've heard tonight is, we want, do we want us to with 30 seconds on a time change, or go with the plan commission's recommendation at 15?
I'd go down.
To 15? Yeah, I've driven around and looked at some of them, even the ones that we went back and forth to Springfield and-
But we don't have to make that decision now, but let's talk about these things. But now, what we do in general is different than what the applicant is coming for, right? I mean, can we address that in a more timely sake, or it's all, or none?
I know, because they're applying for a text amendment.
Right, rather than a variance.
Right.
Yes.
And they would wait for the text amendment to happen. And I guess what I'm trying to do is try to get the things that we think are okay to have staff rewrite this with, so that way we don't have to try to do this again at a count. To have that in the ordinance the way we think it should be now, give that direction to staff.
So what I've got is 15 seconds, 50% of the sign, and commercial and industrial, not within 200 feet of residential. Did I capture it all, or is there anything else?
Other than Mark wants them gone.
Yeah, I guess well.
That can be a future discussion. It's separate from this, though, because what we're saying is, commercial is already allowed. This is a text amendment to, since they're already allowed in commercial districts, to also allow them in industrial, but then, we can make that change, but then have another conversation about, do we wanna abolish all electronic changeable message boards in the future in the city of Batavia as a separate discussion? And we could stop everything and consider that, but this process is already in motion.
Okay.
Alan, can I just add one insight here?
Yes, good, Your Honor.
I, I'm kinda drawing a little bit of a blank on the whole story, but as I remember when those two signs that now sit in front of our fire station, Laura, do you remember when those two both donated, I believe?
Yes, they were, someone had provided donation to the, the fire departments for those boards.
Right. And as I remember, one of those, I think there were several people involved in that, one of them called me before they started doing the research, and they wanted to make sure they weren't stirring up a hornet's nest here. But they were most appreciative of, I'm, I'm sure one of them lived at one of our senior living communities, and either had been a, a receiver, or had been very close to some people who had needed the Batavia Fire Department in times of troubled breathing and resuscitation and whatever have you. And they couldn't say enough for the service that they thought that they were being provided. And they just wanted, they thought by funding this sign, which I think was a lot of money as I remember, that they would help spread the word to people about the services that the Batavia Fire Department was providing, the good things they were doing, and maybe if the sign was big enough and had, you know, could post so many words on it, they could even put a few little health messages about how to try to keep yourself a little bit healthier, and take a walk every day, or whatever the message may be. But they were, you know, I've had people tell me, gee, how much do the taxpayers pay to put those signs in front of the fire station like that? And the answer is, they pay nothing. So I mean, people did show up and donate those, and thought that was a good use of their money, so it's just a sidebar to this whole story, but I thought it was interesting to see how this kinda sparked a lot of people's generosity.
Thank you. And I think the only thing I would add is that I look at those signs as different than the bright LED signs that exist now. I mean, that sign is static, pretty much. So it's like putting, it's like the gas stations and putting up the-
Fuel.
The prices, where it just, it's a static thing, it doesn't move, and I don't look at that.
Not true anymore, Mark.
Yeah, they are moving constantly, aren't they? About every 15 seconds. So I look at them differently, and I think that's what I'm more opposed to is, and again, and I, I know I get distracted by them on the highway when that sign changes, and it doesn't happen very often, but all of a sudden you're looking and you see it, then, oh my gosh, it changed, and then it's like, well, what's that? So that's why I don't like the changing as frequently, and I just don't like those signs in general. I think they're distracting, and, and I'm afraid it'll be garish on Randall Road at some point, and that's, and actually, I'm a little afraid it'd be garish on Route 25 coming into town. I'm not sure where.
We can cross the bridge when it comes to it, but there certainly are certain national brands where it would preclude them from locating their business here in Batavia if they weren't allowed to have them, so.
That'd be fine with me.
I think on Mark's note, like, I'm messing around on the city of Batavia's zoning map. Going back to Wilson and Van Nordwick, those light industrial properties all seem to have 100 feet plus, front, street frontage, and as soon as you get one lot in, they're now 200 feet from residential. So potentially, I'm just using this as an example, you could have three signs right there on Wilson Street as you're driving, you know, across town. Not saying that's gonna happen, it's just an example that would not be my preference for our, our neighborhoods to have.
Nothing magic about 200, we could make it 500, we could make it 1,000. It's whatever as a policy you want to set.
Right. And to Mark's point, would it be better at this point if we made them conditional use, and then we, we get to discuss each sign that gets presented to us? In that way, if there was a national company that wanted to come on Randall Road, like Culvers, and we were like, okay, this is worth them having a sign, but then, at least we get to decide how much of Las Vegas we get to look like or not.
I don't like conditional use, because it sets us up, in my opinion, for discrimination, so I'm not a big fan of conditional use.
So what would you like the wording to look like, then, for these signs?
None.
No signs?
There would be no wording.
So do you guys have direction for staff on the changes that you'd like to see to this, or what should we do?
I think you got a good start.
I think what we came back with was there, and I think that that's something that I think, you know, to me, with the changes, to be able to control the, the light output from them during the day and at night, to set times up when they have to be shut off, whether the business is closed, or whether it's overnight, you know, if the business is a three-shift business. I, I just look at the, the opportunity, I think, that's there, you know, to try to keep especially the stuff in the industrial park to be viable, you know, and I think that they, they use that constantly, and I constantly see some of the message boards that I scroll through to see that are always asking for shift employees out there. This is something that's out on the street that I think would, might be a better way for them to do that, and to keep those businesses going.
Alan, can staff also just dig in a little bit deeper than what might make sense for feet from residential areas, as they're doing this research?
So would you like to know what is the closest, or the, the furthest distance of these industrial pockets that are near, and find out how far away does that have to be in order that all of those businesses can't have electronic signs?
I understand that there's like some areas within our town where it makes more sense for there to be electronic signs than maybe other areas. So in my opinion, you know, the, the residential area of Wilson Street, I don't want signs there, but if it's in more of an industrial area, or even Randall Road, I'm more okay with that.
So do we wanna designate certain roads from one area to, from one road to another to say, except not here? And those signs would not be allowed from here to here, and have it be Main Street and Wilson Street?
Like between Randall and Batavia Avenue or something? I'd be okay with that?
Yeah. Is that a possibility, Scott? Can you set it up like that, like where we don't have the downtown mixed-use district and the change of message?
Yeah, that, it, it's easier to do it by zoning district, you know, from, from a classification standpoint. I think we probably need to think about it from a staff standpoint, how do we regu- I think I get what you, what you're looking to do. I think we just need to noodle over it a little bit to see how we would, you know, put it into an ordinance to, to regulate that in some fashion, so I, I think, I think I get what you're saying, you know. Industrial districts are fine, as long as they're not our little pocket industrial areas and near residential.
That are surrounded by residential.
Right. So let, let me, I think what we'll do is, as we retool this, we'll, we'll, we'll look at that and see if we could put together some language for that.
Thank you.
Can, can we pull out the garage side setback out of there and take that to City Council?
We'll redraft that ordinance, yes, we can do that.
Okay, for just that one, so that'll be separate? Because I don't- Because I don't want to give up, you know, and lose what you did for the public hearings and everything to get that ready and have to take that back through, so as long as that can be separated out and do that, I think we should do that.
We can do that.
Okay, Abby?
I wanted to bring it back to garages real quick, if that's okay. Um, one, one question that I have for staff is that I, I do enjoy reading through the minutes whenever one of these comes to us from the Plan Commission. I just noticed those aren't posted yet from the past couple minute meetings, because I was curious who the dissenting, you know, zoning board member was on the garage thing, because I tend to agree with them, that the, the garage snouts in the front of, you know, houses are not,
Yeah.
not my style. And although I, I would imagine that it's really being driven more by the development community that can, we can, we can pack more housing in, so it's probably a financial decision to put the garages in the front rather than an aesthetic or a consumer choice.
To sideload them, because that's the other thing, too, I've noticed with sideloading, you get, usually get the front of the garage is actually further forward than the house, but it's a sideload garage, so you don't see it.
But it looks a lot better, right?
Right.
So I, I'm curious just about the minutes, and then, yeah, curious if there's any, and then I go back and forth because I actually do prefer higher-density neighborhoods, so I get what they're trying to achieve there, and I don't want to get in the way of that either. But, you know, it's a give and take there, but.
Yes, the minutes, the transcription does take a couple of weeks.
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, there's that lag time.
Joel, do you have the commissioner who voted against that?
I don't like it.
Yes, that was, that was Commissioner, it was Commissioner Lalanne, and he did say that he, he thinks, he thought that maybe a requirement that the garage simply be no further forward than the rest of the house, meaning it could be in line with the rest of the house. But that's not what was being presented, it was to eliminate any garage, attached garage location requirements, and that's why he voted against the, the, the change.
Okay, did I see, Sarah, did you have a comment? I saw, I thought I saw your hand up.
Yes, I was back with the sign conversation, just wondering, and Scott kind of addressed this, so that's why I lowered my hand, but if there is a way to even separate out the light industrial from the industrial? Because I do think that the industrial and commercial signs are more understandable, but on Wilson and Main Street, I think that would not be wonderful for the residents that live in that area. So I'm interested to hear what you guys are able to rework with all of that.
Okay, do we have any more on this, or are we just going to take that back to staff, let them separate the two, and then work on the, um, the message board? Wanted to bring that back to us. Okay.
Are you interested in acting on the garage portion of this, this evening? Or are there amendments that need to be made to the garage portion?
I think Scott said he wanted to rewrite. Do you want it rewritten as a separate ordinance?
We, we, yeah, we can, we can excise out the sign parts and then move forward to the council with revised ordinance that would just address the garages.
Setbacks?
Yep.
I don't know if we'll have time to get it done before Monday's meeting, but we can, we can try.
Okay. Well, then I would make the motion that we recommend a council ordinance 2218 amending the city code Title 10, Chapter 2.1 regarding garage setbacks, only removing everything that has to do with the electronic changeable message signs. Second. And this is second by Ewer. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron? Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi? Malay? Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chanza? And Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried 10 to 0.
Okay, thank you, and we got all those written down, so we're all set up for.
Got it.
Have to redo that one. Right, thank you for coming down. And now we have item number nine, which is Resolution 2247R, approval for a sign grant, facade grant, and downtown improvement grant for Sturdy Shelter Brewing, 10 South Shumway.
And Shannon Jarmus is online.
I guess I'll just.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, council, can everyone hear me?
Hold on a second, Shannon, one second.
Oh, sure.
Just let the record reflect that Alderman Beck has left the proceedings for this one. Now you can go ahead, Shannon, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm thrilled this evening that we have Frank and Diane Mercadante joining us from Sturdy Shelter. They have been hard at work since, at, at least last fall, on their plans to open Batavia's newest brewery at 10 South Shumway, which is the old Kluber building. And we've put together an economic development grant incentive package to discuss this evening. They are requesting assistance through three grant programs. They would like to install three signs, two cabinet signs on the east and west facade of the building, one blade sign on the east side of the building with a budget of $7,731. They would be eligible after staff's review for the maximum award of $1,000 for that work. And then they're also seeking a facade grant to assist with the installation of a garage door that would be visible from the, from the Shumway right-of-way when you're traveling south, so this would be kind of on the north side of the building, to open it up during nicer weather months and allow for a little bit of street presence there. And the budget for that part of the work is approximately $15,700. And they would be eligible, based on final receipts, for the 50% maximum, up to $5,000. And then the third and final request before you this evening is for downtown improvement grant funding. This is for the interior life safety work, as well as some of the modernization. So the package that they've put together includes a substantial amount of HVAC and plumbing upgrades with a total budget of $184,000. And staff has confirmed that they would be eligible for up to the $25,000 maximum. So the three programs combined would offer up to $31,000 in grant assistance. And this would all be verified at the time that the work is completed and final receipts are paid. But staff recommends approval of the three grants, and I just wanted to offer Frank and Diane an opportunity to introduce themselves and maybe answer any questions that the council might have for them this evening.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Does anybody have any questions, Shannon, before we move on to have the ordinance?
How often will the signs change?
How often will the signs change? Every 15 seconds?
We'll say stationary for maybe 15 years. We can go with that, they gotta be there for 15 years. That's all we're worried about, changing.
Exactly.
Different beers, right? Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name's Frank Mercadante, my wife Diane is behind me. She and I are, we're the, oh, I'm the manager of both 10 Shumway LLC, which is the owner of the building, and Sturdy Shelter, which is the, who is leasing. So we're excited about this possibility, we're hoping to open in the summer. Everything always seems to take longer and cost more money, everyone told me that, and I found that to be quite true. But we're, we're hoping for a, a summer opening. We're an independent craft brewery, we're gonna brew ales and lagers, so wide variety, experimental beers, sours and stouts and IPAs and Pilsners, things, hopefully there was something there that you liked. We have a beer, so that's, but, but that's one part of it. So we're all about making great craft beer, but in addition to that, we're all about community. The name Sturdy Shelter comes from a verse that says, "Faithful friends are a sturdy shelter; whoever has one has a treasure." And so we're hoping that this will be a place where the community could gather, a place where you could bring friends or, as you arrive, find friends that you already know or make friends. But if you prefer just to hang out and read a book and drink a beer, you're welcome. So it's, yeah, so it's all about community. We hope that it'll be a treasured place, you know, for locals, just to, to hang out. We are, we hope to be a treasured third space for people. Just wanna, wanna say a thank you for the support that we've received from staff and also for elected officials, for, we've been here before, I think more on Zoom, I think, for, for this meeting. But also the residents, there's been a wonderful support and enthusiasm for this project. Now, many of you know that this building, it started out as a, an opera house, it was a theater, then became, it was renovated beautifully by, by Mike Kluber's firm. But we're hoping to get your support to bring it back to its original intent, you know, where it was a, a place where the community gathers. So that's, that's just a little introduction, I'd be happy to answer any, any kind of questions about any of the, the grants we're requesting.
Does anybody have any questions? So I guess the one question I have with the garage door on the, would be the north side, do you plan on using that as open to, just for foot traffic in an entrance, and just to have it open to the air? Are you gonna use a electronic screen or something as well on it?
We would like to do that, we don't think people will be entering necessarily from there.
Okay.
We're hoping that maybe there, there could be food trucks out right, right back there, where people maybe could enter and, and go in and out from there. It also has utilitarian purposes, we, we gotta get our equipment in somehow, there's no door that our equipment will ever fit in. And plus, we have to get supplies, you know, grain and hops and various other supplies to, to actually through the beer. But it's beautiful, it'll bring some really wonderful natural light into the building, I think it will enhance the exterior as a, as a door. We, if we can do that screen, we will. I, I don't know if that's, you know, if it's, you know, we have to.
Because I know, like on the garage doors and some of the other places that I've been to, and even some of the buildings I've been into that have doors like that, the electric movable screen, although you have to make sure you figure a way to make sure people don't walk through it, is a really good thing, especially down by the river, that's something that I think you really need to look into for that, I mean, as, as an add-on to that. But I like that idea, I totally get why you gotta be able to get into the building to do that.
And the manufacturer that, the manufacturer of the garage store actually manufactures those screens, too.
Mm-hmm.
So we're, we will be looking into that, there's nothing like kind of feeling like you're outside.
Yeah.
You know, having those open doors.
Yeah, I guess just to add on with that screen, I have seen places that have, it's like a fan that creates that screen as well, and that way you never have to shut it, so I'm sure that's not cheap either, I know, like you said, things keep on costing more, but just another option.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I know I've had tons of comments and had to answer a lot of questions when people ask, as soon as the dumpster was out there, what's going on, what's going on, is it finally gonna open? Because they've heard about it, but they're, you know, everybody's excited when a new place comes in, and, you know, it's just something that we don't have immediately right downtown that people want, so.
We'll do it as quickly.
There is pent-up anxiety in the community for this.
Yeah, 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 we, we know the feeling.
You know, the other thing that strikes me about it is, is that it's all coming together very nicely, like there was this huge grand plan where we went out, solicited all these people who had been to Batavia and opened up their businesses. You know, we did a few things, obviously, we made some major investment in downtown, we built the Riverwalk 20 years ago, it was kind of a place for people to walk and enjoy the river, because I've had other mayors from other towns in here telling me they think Batavia has the nicest view of the Fox River of any of the cities along it, and it's kind of continuous. It's, a lot of places have something that goes really bad in the riverfront, and we, if we had it, we got rid of it. And so we've made a lot of long-term investments, this building certainly was one of them, because this was a, as I've had people who graduated from high school with me in the 1960s come in here and say, they can remember when this was a dump down here, and they come in here and see this and say, boy, this is really something nice now. So anyway, I just want to thank you for kind of jumping on the bandwagon here and bringing your own idea, and we didn't have a whole bunch of people standing there beating on you, telling you this is what should be done, but you've kind of fit into the music pretty good, and the sound is, I think, gonna be really great. And, you know, the Comedy Vault and the Boardwalk shops and everything else that's kind of come together over there. And I guess the First Baptist Church property Phase 2 will be yet another new adventure, whenever we get around to it. We've got people kicking the tire on that, but nothing solid yet, but there's a lot of interest in where. I've had several mayors in here from Wisconsin, I had the mayor of Algonquin, Illinois down here rather recently, and she wanted to walk to downtown so she could understand it and what we did here, because she says, you've really waved some magic wands on this place, so I thank you for what you're helping us put together.
Oh, thank you.
I've got some old pictures of the, of the movie theater I'm gonna drop off to you one of these days, I've been collecting them for you, and I just.
Appreciate it.
I gotta get a couple of them in large, but that, those are an interesting thing, too, because that was a movie theater that people didn't drive their car to, they, they walked to it.
Yeah.
So, interesting idea for back then, but.
There's a lot of us that'll be walking down there now when it gets reopened.
Might be.
Maybe walking home, too. Slowly.
Right?
Yeah.
Your walk home will be a lot longer.
Yeah, still just a mile. Does anybody online have any questions, the owners up here? And I think that this just shows some of the, the grant programs that we have set up, that how accessible they are and how the return on them and the amount of money that you see, you know, somebody come in new to town and want to build a, a new business up in town, and that, you know, it's not a huge portion of what they're doing, but it's enough that it really helps them out to get to that, because I know that you started out at one point and you're ending up at another point with the dollars you're spending. I'm in the process of doing some plumbing work at my house, and it just has grown immensely, so I know all about what was what you thought is not what you end up with.
Alan, if I could also say, you know, the, the public might wonder what the source of funding for grants like this is, and these particular grants are funded by our TIP district. So the increment that is being generated on an annual basis, we are utilizing to invest in people like Frank and Diane, who are making exponentially more of an investment than, than we're providing in these grants to create viable businesses and even increase the value of these downtown properties. So it just sort of builds and builds that rising tide that raises all ships. And this is one of the things that City of Batavia does with its TIP funds.
Okay. Thank you for coming down and look forward to the next steps, and hope you're back here when you're ready to open.
Thank you, yeah.
We'll be ready to walk down there and have a good time.
Yeah, I'll look forward to seeing you all.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
No other questions, I'll make the motion that we recommend a council Resolution 2247R, approval for a sign grant, a facade grant, and a downtown improvement grant for Sturdy Shelter Brewing, 10 South Shumway.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Connolly, roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron absent, Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi absent, Malay absent, Ewer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Risado?
Aye.
Beck absent, Connolly?
Aye.
Chanza absent, and Sofa?
Aye.
Motion carried 9 to 0.
Consent agenda? Oh, can't do consent agenda.
No, we can't do consent agenda, and I think we should talk about it, that the building, progressing.
Sounds good.
Will open this summer, right, this summer? We'll make it happen, we'll get everybody to will it to happen.
Yes, take the positive thoughts.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, up next is item 10. Okay, up next is item 10, project status.
Sure. So, just an update. Council requested that a letter be drafted on behalf of the mayor, requesting that the Secretary of Transportation intercede expedite the removal of the crosswalk at McKee Street and 31, as well as to expedite their review of our request for a road diet on Route 31. And I just wanted to report that last week, during the Metro West drive down to Springfield, we did have the opportunity to meet personally with the Secretary of Transportation, and he took the time to hear from us. And we had a conversation with him about this situation. And he did commit to the mayor and I that he would definitely look into the matter, and requested that I send him the last correspondence that we had with Area 1 of IDOT regarding this matter. So, I forwarded that information to him this week. And based upon the conversation that mayor and I had with him, I fully expect that he will be contacting them to talk about this. So, hopefully, we'll see some quick action on the part of Area 1 in particular, to get that crosswalk removed as soon as possible. But again, you know, hopefully, consideration of the road diet as what we see as a, a good safety measure all along that roadway, to allow easier crossings by both pedestrians and those on bikes as well. And certainly, you know, the lack of the shoulder on the road, it makes it a, a difficult driving path for everyone, too. So, we'll keep you up to date on what transpires there. Plan Commission is gonna be meeting on April 6 to continue reviewing various text amendments to the zoning code. The incidental outdoor display in industrial districts, changes to allowable zoning districts for rooming houses and towing service establishments, changes for parking requirements for convenience retail establishments, and changes to drive-through signage requirements. And then on the April 20 meeting, they'll be considering a conditional use and design review for Mocha Coffee. They're hoping to open their second location here in Batavia on Independence Drive. Restaurant Madness ended on Thursday, March 24. We did a little bit different program this year, where in the past, we had sent out postcards to all the households. This year, we hired a videographer to create promotional videos, and each business told about what their discount was. And so, we're gonna have a recap meeting in the coming weeks with both the Chamber and Main Street to evaluate the effectiveness of that program and determine if the direction for next year. Crews have begun preparation to close North River Street for the outdoor dining season, and we're planning to use the identical setup for the tables, how they were arranged in 2021. Main Street has provided the city with artwork for a new banner that will be installed on the arch to let people know that the businesses and restaurants are open. The city has received comments from IDOT about the permanent one-way on North River Street. They've issued several new comments related to the traffic signals that weren't included in the initial review. They're now requiring that all pedestrian crossings at the intersection be retrofitted with audible controls. So, when someone pushes the walk button, that, that also speaks. So, you can imagine that, that will add a little bit of additional expense onto the project. Our engineers are investigating exactly what needs to be done to comply with IDOT's new comments. And, let's see, one other thing that I wanted to let you know, I just learned of today, is that our fire department and police department both have benevolent associations. These are funded through a, they're called 2% funds, because they're funded through a 2% tax on insurance. And the, they may use that for equipment or other needs of the departments. And our Batavia Fire Department Benevolent Association approved for purchase essential rescue tools that are valued at approximately $35,000. And there are tools that are primarily used in the extrication of vehi, of victims who are involved in vehicle accidents, of which we have unfortunately experienced several in the last few weeks. This purchase is in addition to, one, the Benevolent Association made in the same equipment a couple of years ago, with the assistance of a very generous $20,000 donation that they received. Having two sets of these quick response rescue tools will enable the department to position one set of tools at each of the fire stations for first response, so that they can provide immediate deployments in the field where they're, where they're needed most. So, I just wanted to share that news. Really a nice thing for them to have. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions for me.
I'll just say, I will agree with Laura. I think the comments and the contact we had when we were downstate was pretty good this year. I, I think we got a point across that we really want to try to expedite and go through the, the process to work on the road diet for Route 31, Batavia Avenue, and how we want to try to do that. And we really need help from the state to make sure we're not just gonna drag it out for another, you know, year or two to get an idea where we're going with it. So, I think that that was a really good conversation we were down there, so. Look forward to getting some information back from them. As long as we can pick out the voice that's on Wilson Street, I'm okay with that.
Like the Australian accent.
Yep. Gotta be Australian.
Is that something they're going to require of all intersection retrofits from going forward?
We were shocked to see that in the comments. So, we're investigating where that.
It's probably just an Area 1 thing.
I know they haven't been saying Louis County.
Say, I don't disagree either.
Right.
When they first popped up, and I was living where I was in, in St. Louis County, they, I was shocked, because I was probably quarter mile from the street, and I could hear the, it, it just, it just beeps, is what it is. I don't know if it's the actual voice they're talking about now, but it, it beeps when you press the button. So, you know.
So, I'm trying to think where I was that I actually, there was one, was a voice.
Oh.
You know, and the thing I think would be nice, it would also be nice, is when it comes up and says, "Don't walk it," yells at you if you're out in the street. And try to stop people.
I know I brought it up, and I don't remember what Gary's response was, but I thought safety concern there really is, is that the left hand from 25 onto Wilson is at the same time as the walk symbol. So, you've got two people with the go-hads right there. Why that's not on the table is anything that needs to be fixed is a little beyond me.
So, one of the things, I think actually that is addressed, because as opposed to being on an angle now, the crosswalk will be perpendicular, which I think will help that.
So, we will get a walk symbol before they get the left-hand turn, because it'll still be a four-way intersection then, even if it's straight. We'll still be trying to cross the road while people are trying to turn left.
Yeah, they basically need like a turn arrow.
They
That is different than Than the crosswalk.
Than the crosswalk, yeah. Again, first they have to say yes to the one-way south. And then, once we get that approval, then I think we have to go through, I don't know if it's Phase 2 engineering or whatever we have to do to get everything laid out for that, you know, the, the change and the upgrade to it. And that's where I think we should definitely make sure we remember to get that question answered, why that is. And then I think that's, again, one of those things where they say we can't change the timing on the lights without applying to IDOT. I think that, to me, we have to really somehow figure out how to change that. You know, and that may be something that we really push with the, the, the road diet, is that with the interconnection and the different times of year we have, we really can't just have a year-round or a two-year difference between when we can change that, because it has to be different during school year, during the school year, and at different times. That has to be able to change. And I mean, it's programming. It's literally how the thing is set up and programmed. Does anybody else have any others tonight? Nobody with others?
Al?
Go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, just a, a quick note. In finalizing the entitlement approvals for Winding Creek, I was contacted by Polte's council, and they pointed out a sunset provision in the annexation agreement and the ordinances that were approved in October. There's a 180-day window for Polte to get all the approvals, and more importantly, to take possession of the property. They will not be able to have, to have the closing within that 180-day period, which I think ends on April 16. All of the resolutions that the committee recommended at its previous meeting are set to go in front of the city council on April 4. But they will be accompanied by another ordinance for city council approval on Monday. And the ordinance will effectively extend that sunset clause provision in the annexation agreement and those ordinances an additional 60 days. With that, with that additional extension time, Polte will be able to comfortably close on the property. So, I just wanted to point that out, that there will be another ordinance for council consideration and hopeful adoption on Monday.
Okay. So, if anybody has any questions on that or anything, try to get those to Scott or Joel before the meeting. I think, I don't remember which one, well, I think we've done that one time before, where our council scheduled in the lineup with the dates for closing on a property, and we had to do another one of those where we extended out the, the timeframe for the developer to get that done. Thank you. Okay, if there are no others, motion for adjournment?
It's moved.
Second.
Motion by Ewer, second by Saron. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.